What happened?
Yeah, they're just freezing.
Oh, I thought you were talking to me. Okay. I'd like to call public hearing to order for our special call meeting for Wednesday, November 9th. There's no one to speak, then we're going to go straight into our regular meeting. We'll have our invocation by Jeff McNeely, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Wells. Please stand.
Father, we love you, we praise you, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to gather tonight, Lord, to conduct the business of this parish. We ask for wisdom and discernment that can only come from you. We thank you for the way that you bless us, that you bless this parish. We bless all those who serve, Father, all those who protect, all those who lay their life down for our good, Lord, and for our protection. We pray, Lord, all these things through Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We ask all military, both active and veterans, to render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zoo, would you call roll, please? Mr. Forrest?
Present.
Mr. Engraffia?
Here.
Mr. Joseph?
Present.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Richdell?
Here.
Mr. Maye?
Here.
Mr. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Viall?
Here.
Ms. Hyde?
Here.
Ms. Coats?
Here.
If you have a cellphone, please mute it or turn it off at this time. First item is our redistricting matters, strategic demographics. We have Mr. Dan Garrett here with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So what we've got here today, there are two ordinances that we actually crafted, two plans. One plan is sort of the same structure as you currently have with two minority districts and eight majority white districts. And what we essentially did is from the various series of meetings we had with each of you, with y'all, we tried to craft something that took into account as sort of as much as everybody wanted. You know, this is, as you saw when we were going through the maps in our meetings, it's a puzzle, and the puzzle has to fit together. So if you change one, you've got to change something else. And so I wanted to say, well, give me a little bit of that. Well, that puts you maybe too much population, too little population, because remember, your population of each district has to stay within about plus or minus 5% of that ideal population, which is the total number of districts into the total parish population. So what you have in Plan A, and it's got, you have the full maps there, you've also got the population chart there in the corner. You'll see that fourth column there, percent deviation, all those numbers are within 5% plus or minus, which means your plan complies with that population equality requirement. You can then see what the racial populations are if you look further to the right. Now, like I said, the basic structure is the same. We made changes as we needed to make those numbers work. And I'll back out a little bit so you can kind of get a whole, a view of the parish as a whole. Yes, sir.
Dan, what is, I'm kind of stupid. What is TOP?
Turn your mic on.
What does, up above the column that says, is that total?
Total, yes.
And what is, what is VAP?
VAP is voting age population.
Okay.
That's one of the things you look at, particularly when you're looking at whether, when you're looking at minority districts, that's one of the other factors you look at. The main, the most important number is that population number.
Okay.
And the percent off the ideal. But then, to get a better notion of the racial makeup, you also look at population and voting age population. Now, understand, these numbers are from the census, which was conducted two years ago. Actually, more, I mean, the census day was technically April 1 of 2020, and why April Fool's Day is the census day is, you know, I'm not sure, but kind of funny. But, so, but it's the numbers we have to use. And we know that things have changed from then to now. Certainly, voting age population's changed, those people have gotten older. So you may have people who are now voting age population. By voting age, that's 18 and older. It gives you an idea of who could potentially register to vote because they're old enough to do so. And like I said, we tried to accommodate as many of the requests as possible. Now, the thing about it is, y'all have an ordinance that's aligned with this. In order to make it work, we weren't able to use just the whole precincts that y'all currently have. And, because sometimes the precincts are just too big. You can move, you can do less than a precinct. And as we talked about, you can split a precinct and create a new one, because y'all, the parish council, is part of your role. Now, that precinct won't be used until y'all get ready to run in '23. But you can do that if moving part of a precinct makes, makes that population number work. Now, when we do that, we do have some restrictions on where we can do it. You saw those census blocks. Again, the US Census Bureau draws those census blocks. We don't get to draw those lines, but we have to follow those lines. And they have to be a visible feature. Because they can draw lines, a census block line that's just out in the middle of a field, we've got to have a visible feature that the registrar can see. It's a pipeline, it's a waterway, even a canal, road, that sort of thing. So that's, that's, that's sort of the process that we had to go to, to try to create as few precincts as possible to make the plan work. And that's one of the things that the ordinance does do, is it actually creates those precincts and defines, and describes them. So that the registrar, when they're ultimately having to assign voters, they'll be able to look geographically on the map exactly what they have to do. So that's that Plan A, and that's one of the ordinances that has been, that's been provided. There is, there was also a request to see if we could create a plan that, within the existing 10-member structure, create an additional minority district. We looked at this, actually, we did the school board as well, and that issue had come up at the school board. They, they kind of got close, but realized they, they, they didn't really like what creating a third district did to the other two minority districts. So ultimately, they ended up not even formally proposing it. But we were asked to put something together. Yes, sir.
Can you go into a little more detail, if you may, what it would have done to the others two?
Yeah, well, basically, you only have so much minority population, and it tends to coalesce in certain areas. So what you end up, what you would end up having to do is essentially pull minority population from the existing minority districts to create the third one, which necessarily pushes those numbers down. So if you go to Plan B, you'll see...
B is the next one, but that...
Yeah, that's this map. If you'll notice...
This on the...
Yeah, it's, we...
But look in your packet, it's easier to read.
Yeah, it might be easier to read on paper. But if you will look, we, we were able to do it with some work. And if you'll look, so District 3, the black population went down to 26, 56.29. Now, it's still majority black, but it's significantly lower than what it would be under a 8-2 plan. Then District 7 went down to 55.83, and we were able to create another minority district, but it's only got a black population of 51.85%. So it's just slightly majority black. Yes, sir.
But when is that tight or close? That, I hate to use the word guarantee, but for lack of a better term, you're taking a chance.
I will say, I've been doing this, and, and put it this way, we don't have to pre-clearance anymore. That's what we used to have, send the plans up to Washington DC. We had to do that 10 years ago. I worked on 32 plans last time, every one of them got pre-cleared. So I tried not to lose. But I can tell you, my experience, if this was having to go to the Justice Department, they get a little bit nervous when you, when you try to call a plan a minority district when it's just barely over 50%. And Mr. Bruno, you brought up, what's that VAP number? Look at that last column in this, in the, in Plan B, District 5. So it's 51.85% total population black, but the voting age black population is only 48.39 compared to a voting age population of 45.33%.
It's 50/50, voting age.
Right. And, and so it gets, you know, it's still slightly, but it's not... One of the things you have to look at, and when you're looking at whether something is a valid minority district, is one, population. Some other indicators are you look at voting age population. You also look at, once you get into it, you can look at things such as voter registration.
Yeah.
And then you look at voter turnout. Because you are, I think you're right, Mr. Joseph, and it's not about guaranteeing, but we try not to mislead people that a district looks like it's going to be a minority district, but it may not perform that way. So normally, you try to keep those districts somewhere at least in the upper to mid 50s or 60s, depending upon the jurisdiction. Some places, you have higher levels of voting age population or higher levels. Here, y'all tend to have, there tends to be a drop-off. So for example, although the total population of District, of this proposed District 5 would be 51.85, the voting age black population's only 48.39. So it's a drop-off of about 3%, and that's actually fairly common for the parish.
Well, I think the same district. I think, let me see.
Did you not leave the councilman in the district that they was...
Well, for this plan, we, we were not able to, because normally, we don't try to, we try not to redistrict somebody out of their district. I've only done it once, and that's because the person said, "We need to move a district from this side of the parish to the other side of parish, and I'm not running, so use mine." This one, there was no way to create a third minority district that I could find that didn't result in incumbents having to be in the same district. Yes.
That's why the school board chose to stay with the two.
I suspect you are correct.
Yes, okay.
So, Dan, who's playing?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Richel. I'm sorry. Councilman Richel is running against, I mean, the person from District 4, is that correct?
Well, and, yeah, the, the, because I didn't, I couldn't really, there was really no way to do it. The primary focus of this plan was trying to create that third minority district. And it's, and again, having, having gone through the exercise with the school board, I was a few steps down the road, because I kind of knew what was possible and what was not possible. I can tell you that when we were working on it at the school board level, they said, "Well, just, all you've got to do is go down there to Ponchatoula, take that black population." And I had to go show them, and I think I showed some of y'all.
Showed them.
I showed Mr. Wells.
Yeah.
I firmly believe it. Y'all know this parish better than me, and there probably is some black population down there. But they didn't fill out the census, so I don't know that they're there.
Taking a chance.
And, and if you look at those precincts down there, they were, there is one precinct that is majority, minority, in the Ponchatoula.
And there are, there are some people in that area, but evidently, there are not...
Not reported by the census. And that's, and that's, that's always a difficulty, I think.
And I was the one that, you know, well, I don't know if I was the only one, but I was the one that asked Dan to kind of see how the three minority districts would look. And, you know, because it was based on the census. And actually, we should have three. And then also, I used that as, you know, even back in 1988, we had, you know, three minority districts. And it was just my feeling at that time, just to see if it was possible for us to do it.
Mr. Buddy had a question.
Can, Mr. Buddies had a question?
I was going to add, do you have a Plan C?
No. Do you not have a Plan C?
Well, the reason I'm asking, I don't know why you met with us individually, because my district is about 10% of what we talked about.
Which, in which one, Plan A or B?
District 5.
In Plan A or B? Because Plan, now, Plan B, Plan B did not have any relation necessarily to...
Plan A.
You're in Plan A.
I mean, I lost half of Hammond, all of Tickfa. I go to A meet.
That's A?
We just wanted to make sure that you...
I think you're looking at B.
You're looking at B.
Wait, wait, even the other one.
We wanted to make sure you start getting some calls. That's what we were doing. Mr. Buddy.
No, A, you want to look at A, John. Get him on A.
No, but I mean, I still lost half of Hammond and all of Tickfa.
On Plan A?
Yeah. I lost it to you.
Well, you lost it to me. I mean, there was a reason for that, that I just wanted to take it. Now, it has to do with the population. I had to pick up over 2,000.
Well, and that was one of the issues, is that in order...
And I didn't select that, it was just, that's the way it fell, now.
One of the things we do have to do is, even though you're not doing pre-clearance, you still have to avoid what's called retrogression. And that is, you have to avoid losing minority districts that you already have. And so...
Well, he didn't pick up any minorities, well, for the, for the area that you give him out of mine, there was no minorities in that area.
Well, and again, it was also about population. Mr. Wells did point out, his district was one of the smaller districts as far as population on District, as we started. And so, you know, and, and it's, it's just one of these situations where you just got to grab it where it's available. And one of the problems that you have with districts that are sort of interior is they can go in, you have options to go in multiple directions. The districts that are on the exterior of the parish, you're, you're much more limited in where you can go. If, you know, in other words, you can't go to the next parish. You can't up, down, or left, and, and you certainly, you know, there are restrictions where you go. So what you end up having to do is, the ones on the exterior have to come in, which necessarily means the ones on the interior get cannibalized to some extent. But by the same token, you've still got to make all those numbers work.
You know, there's one thing that I guess we all, this, I haven't been through these things, this is about the third or fourth one, and I always heard there was two things you have to be contiguous.
I got summary of the universe.
That's one of the things. The second thing is respecting the minority district. But over the course of my first one to now, you, we don't have a separation of the minorities like we used to have. You know, you've got, the minority and the white population now lives together. A lot of your subdivisions and all of that, they're mixed. So where it used to be like Belma or Fluka, a lot of people are living together now. So it's really harder now to separate the minorities because they, everybody's living together. So that's a good thing. That has improved in the parish over the years. But the, the second thing, you know, if you look at this map, and actually look at the map we're working under now, this is probably more contiguous than, than we were 10 years ago. It looks to me, especially District 2, it shortened you up quite a bit, John. It makes it, and you want more people that are in kind, that know, you know, that have the same wants and needs. Whereas when he, in that district there, you and Kentwood, those people have one problem, and you go to BDICO, they have another one. So now, it's more like a like situation. So, and I'm looking at mine, I'm below 1064 in this new one, and I don't know, I guess that's part of Joey's old district. Joey, is that part of yours?
Joey.
Joey.
What's that?
Where, it looks like I dropped down below 1064. Where is that area at? Is that by Illinois Jones Road over there?
Below, let's see, year number...
You should be able to zoom in and see, see the little, is...
Yeah, I see it, 1064. Oh, that little, that's, Johnny, that's over by Durbin Road.
Is that at the end of the parish line down there?
Yes, about the Livingston line, yeah.
Pass Woodhaven.
Right, right. You go down to the In-N-Out line, you get on Durbin, Illinois Jones, Fluka, yeah, Johnny's Lane.
Yeah, and see, my district has never went that far south.
It's just a little down, yes.
But, I don't know, I guess each of us didn't get all we wanted, but I don't...
I don't think there's any way for everybody to...
And I can tell you, I've never done one of these where everybody's...
Got what they want.
I had a Gerard tell me 10 years ago, his district was way overpopulated, and I was like, you know, "We've got to take about 1,000 people out of your district." And he said, "That's all right. Okay, I don't mind working hard, you can leave them."
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I, look, I agree, I've been through this once before myself with the city. Matter of fact, Bill did it, I think, years ago. But one of the things I noticed, and I guess maybe this is just not, I know it's a plus and minus, what, 5%?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, but three of the four fastest-growing districts in the parish are on the plus side. Does that look at? I mean, these, I mean, I know you're just looking at the census, but these are the three of the four districts have grown the fastest and won't continue to grow. That's not a factor in this...
Well, I mean, it is, it is, you can make, that can be a valid consideration.
It's 8, 9, and 10 of the districts, okay? And then 2, I think, is 5% under or over now?
Yeah, it's, it's, 2 is minus 4, 6, 3, so it's...
Yes, and the other, three other fastest-growing districts are over. I'm just, you know, I wonder if that's a factor when y'all look at this, or not.
Well, it is.
I think you've done a good job.
And you look at where you can go. Because a lot of times, and that's the issue, is, and we tried, we tried to split as few precincts as necessary. Now, that is one of the things you can do. You do have the ability to split precincts. Clarks always get a little nervous when you do that, because that's more poll folks that they had. Now, you will have the opportunity next year at some point, if y'all want to, to go in and try to figure out a way to consolidate or to merge some of the new precincts with existing precincts, so that you can keep the number of poll workers down.
But see, David, that's...
Well, the reason I asked, the reason I asked the question, I hear Mr. Richel, and that plus 500 I'm getting is coming from Mr. Richel. That's why I'm asking that question.
Let's see.
It's 129A. That wasn't in my district before.
Yeah, it's down the...
Yeah, mine grew the most.
And Bellwood subdivision and all that.
You know, mine grew the most, and I think, and I'm just asking. It's not a big burning issue with me, I'm just asking a question.
So, and, and I can, I mean, this is a static map, this is the digital map that we sent. I can look at 129A. I do know, just from having worked in this parish before, that is a large precinct.
Yes.
So it's not, I mean, I can't imagine we could, because the problem is, is if you gave, if you took it out of you and gave it to them, I, I think we'd have to figure out a way to also swap some other stuff.
No problem.
And I, and we, and like I said, one of the things we can do is, is we can, if there are any specific number questions, we can get to those and look at, I know Mr. Engraffia had a question, and I'll, I'll look at, because if you can figure out ways to say, swap this for that, where you're only involved in two districts.
I have a section that I could swap with another. And it was when I... When I met with you the last time, there was a section, a small section, that's now in Joey's and the other ones in mine, so I was just kind of curious if...
Do you know which precinct?
Um, I don't have a list here. It is?
The precincts are the little numbers?
So 137C.
Yeah, 137C is, if you'll see that blue line, that's one of the precincts that we did split. Now, we could look at, you know, adjusting where that split is, or undoing that split and then splitting something else instead.
That's what I was asking for, yes. So splitting off the south side of 149, I mean, west side, like switching that for that.
So, right now, 130, so under this plan, 137C is split between 6 and 10. So if you were, would you be saying...
And then 6 and 10 would be the, the west side of 149. He would just come down further.
You mean 139?
Uh, no, 149.
Does he want to come down?
Oh, okay, I see.
So it's just this for this.
Overall, I think you've done a good job. Have, have, want, in other words, have this line go this direction and have, and then create a split here.
Yes. We had that on the rough draft.
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready.
I have a question.
Okay.
Could you look at swapping Precinct 33 for 127? And if 127 is too big, do a split precinct there to equalize what Precinct 33 is?
All right, let's see.
So you want to get the town of Tickfa back, Mr. Buddy?
Yeah.
What is 127?
A lot of work, and I'm from Tickfa.
What is 127?
It's, it's a precinct that goes from, from Woodhaven Road to, this is...
Wordline, comes down to Wordline.
And I, actually, let's see, so you would, now, you would have to, the, the only thing you could possibly do is split 127? Because you've noticed right here, see, 127, if you took that all out, it would, it would cut you off from this, right here.
You wouldn't be...
So you wouldn't be contiguous anymore.
Say that again.
In other words, if you...
Not 127, A127.
Yeah. Precinct 125 is, about, about 2/3 of precinct 125 right here is, is in 5.
You're not going to be touching it.
If you took all of 127 out, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't have that portion, they would not connect.
So you want this whole block gone?
Yeah.
He's saying...
Maybe draw a line here.
What's on the west side of that red line also?
The west side of the red line.
That next big green block.
Here?
Uh, I can't see.
The, the far, the far...
To the far, the far west, right? Yeah, the far west. That's part of one precinct, 125.
Well, I thought it said 127.
127 is the precinct next to it.
So 125 is split between you and...
Yeah, 125, that blue line indicates that's split.
Move 125 farther east until you get what equals Tickfa.
I don't know if I want to do that.
You ain't running.
I'm just saying, I don't know if I want to do that. I, I don't, first of all, I don't know where that is. And second of all, all of us has got to remember, I know we're looking at it now as ourselves, everybody here's got one more term. So you're going to, this is a 10-year deal.
Yeah.
You've got to look further down the road of what these districts and people having to run in. So I, I think we're looking at it as individuals, but you've got to look at this, after the next term, half, or more than half of this council is going to be here. So you've got new people that have to run.
I, I don't know what this change and that would, would reflect to what you're even talking about.
Well, I mean, it's dropping some more of District 4 below 1064, Buddy, which has been for 30 years, the boundary line between District 5 and District...
You're already there on 125.
Well, no, that's, that's proposed in here now. That never was there.
I know. I said, "You're already here now."
That's what I say, but it, I mean, I ain't even saying I'm okay with that, but to move it that much further, I don't care about Tickfa. I mean, if there's some other way that you can keep Tickfa, I'm okay, but I want to look at some other different options of what we could do too, you know? I mean, can we drop it below 442 on the east side of the railroad tracks? And I know we can't go far, because then I'd be encroaching on you.
You see what he's saying, Mr. Buddy?
I'm sorry?
He's saying, let him come down more up here and give you Tickfa. Let him come down into here and swap out Tickfa. On the, on the south side of his district and the north side of yours.
What is the voting population of Tickfa? Do you know?
Tickfa itself?
That's actually where I live.
Precinct 33.
I don't, I don't have the registered voter data tonight.
Can't be over 300 votes.
That's my precinct.
I'm pretty sure Tickfa's a village, so I'm pretty sure they're under 1,000 population.
What is it, 33?
What, you said a population?
Yeah.
It is a single precinct, though, it's precinct 33, so whatever the registrar has for precinct 33 would be Tickfall. This is a single precinct town.
33 registered voters, uh, total is, does that sound right? 392?
In 2021, it was 647.
392, 332 white, 48 black.
But Tickfall?
Whatever 33 is, it's 392 registered voters. That's not the population, that's the registered voters.
I think it's 650 population.
Uh, I think I got that here too.
So if we move Tickfall back into Mr. Rizel's, would I have to pick up 600 or would I pick up 300?
Let's see, you'd have to pick up, let's say, right now you were at a minus 433, so if you took out, you'd, you'd have to pick up at least as much as you gave out, because you're already in the minus four.
Yeah.
The total population in 33 is 635.
So that's about, you'd, you'd have to find 635 population to replace that. Because like I said, you're already within, you're already very close within that plus or minus five. Again, y'all's districts are, you know, whatever, just a hair under, you know, just a hair with 13,000 is your ideal. So, I mean, just running just simple numbers on that, that means 10% of districts 1,300. So 5% of districts, 550. So that, that, that's, that, that amount is, is the entire deviation, about that six figure.
Well, I live in the precinct that's off of 442, so I can't do that.
Imagine, Buddy.
I live in the area off of 442, so I can't swap that out, so if you're not, not willing to do that.
Wait a minute, no, I ain't saying that. Over here where you're talking about, that precinct number is what, 127?
Yeah.
And 125, there's two precincts there?
125. 125 is playing a split.
They touch each other like.
Which one is 125 along 51?
It's that, it's that larger precinct.
The large one, not.
This is what your district used to.
Yeah, it's, it's, the number is right, is right there. It says 125 right there on the west side of it, that, that whole precinct is precinct 125, then that small precinct to, to the east of it is 125.
This is, this is part of 125, they gave you, this is the rest of 125. It's both.
I was talking about like moving it to Milton Road. Right now it stops at Woodhaven, I'm talking about moving it to Milton. That would probably be, uh, maybe too many.
Well, what if, um, where's Woodhaven?
Yeah, because Milton is right here.
It's already at Woodhaven, Mr. Buddy. Woodhaven is where they split 125.
If I'm moving from Woodhaven to Milton, that may equalize what, what Tickfall is.
Which would be Lee Hughes Road and.
Yeah, so what, and I've, and I've got it down, what you'd be looking at is potentially swapping out 33 for, 125 is already going to be split, just making that split move more to the.
125A or something.
You hear what he's saying?
Yeah, but how many, how many people are in that block from where?
Again, this is a static PDF map, this is not my, the one where I can pull it up and, and draw plans. Um, but that's one, but that's what I'm saying, I'm making notes of what y'all are looking to do, and so what I can then do is, is give y'all specific answers on whether that's feasible or not, or how far it could go, you know, what the numbers are. And if we had to, we could even get, you know, the two, the two districts that were involved, get on a Zoom call. I find those to be fairly effective, because you can get on there, and y'all can actually see exactly what we're seeing, just like when we, when we met.
Richard?
Sir?
Because actually, Dan, what's before us tonight to, and ordinance forms A and B, right?
Yes, sir.
So if we do that, and then maybe you guys can get together and work it out, I mean, for.
And again, and if what you're talking about is making, if you're making a slight amendment, for example, if what ends up happening is a slight amendment to Plan A, then that's, that would just be an amendment to the ordinance that would get adopted on the 28th, when y'all get ready to do it. And, I mean, it's not going to make any wholesale changes, you're just talking about making little pushes one way or the other. And I've got, I've got the 10, the 1061, I've got the 541, uh, and then, Mr., I, I kind of have a notion of what you're, what you're talking about, but like I said, we can, I can set up a Zoom call, and it's, particularly when you're talking about two districts, give both of you on Zoom call, that way you actually see where the lines are, we can tell you exactly what the numbers are.
He can click and show y'all on the screen.
I can zoom in, and y'all can literally see everything I see. Love technology sometimes, even though I'm just a lawyer, and Jeff had to make, he had to hook this all up, so, but.
And he's not even our technology guy.
He's an accountant.
He's a beanbag.
He just prays over it, and God makes it happen.
There you go.
Well, just looking at that area that we're talking about, you would almost have to put that whole block in, in District Four. But I'm telling you, Buddy, there's not 600 votes in there, I don't believe.
Well.
Well, we want to know that too.
If y'all can do a Zoom call with him, and he can show y'all.
One, one more time, this wouldn't, this wouldn't be a swap, but if you could look at the 129A, maybe that's, I'm plus 500, I think, I don't know if that would help anybody, that would be part of your old district, that's all I'm saying. And on this map, this old map I have, we had split those precincts, I think, according to this.
So the 129A.
Yes.
If, yeah, Mr. Buddy.
Which is a new piece to my district, is all I'm saying.
Mr. David might could stand to lose it, because he's so close to the, to the max.
Um, so I just, I'm just going to throw that out there, but it's not the end of the world. But on this old map, you got 129, you got 129A, and it looks like 129A was split before. This is one of the first.
It's split currently, it's split, if you look at, if you look at 129.
Yes.
A on there, it is split between District Seven and District Eight, right there at, uh, North Range.
Which one, if you.
Turn your mic, turn your mic on, Mr. Buddy.
Which one would?
Dan, could you just walk over here one second?
Which one would better serve?
This is an old map when I first had it. And this was, see, 129A, 129.
33 and losing the Woodhaven, a little piece of.
All I'm saying is, this is my.
125.
And so I'm picking up all of this, I'm picking up.
See, well, what I swap with David?
129A is what I'm picking up, okay?
You got enough that you could, you could take that.
Okay, as you can see, that piece right there was District Five before.
I don't want to take some additional.
It is a large district.
He's got to give up some.
1850.
Because he's so close to.
You could take 129A back.
His district needs more room to grow.
But you wouldn't get Tickfall?
No, well, that wouldn't benefit me whatsoever.
He wants Tickfall, that's the whole point.
Or a piece of that, anyway.
All right, Dan, let's look.
Let's, maybe you can look at it.
Let's look at that 127.
We don't, we can't.
And maybe instead of going.
And I think it's confusing, it's, it looks like it's 127, but 127 is actually that little small rectangle. 125 is the green and the red.
Okay.
It goes off, it, it goes from, what is it?
Four and five.
Right there, at Russ, and then all the way over. So what I'll look at, I'll look at, how far would I have to move four into 125? 125 has already got part of, uh, I mean, four's already got part of 125, how far would we have to move to the east, move that line to the east, in order to replace it with Tickfall?
Tickfall, yes.
Right. Because we would move it as a whole precinct.
And Mr. David is saying he'd be willing to give up some of 129A.
Piece of 129A, yeah.
To help Mr. Buddy.
Which would be the western piece, I guess, the way to say it.
Yeah.
Am I saying that correct?
That Whiskey Lane extension, I think Mr. David is just trying to get Jill out of his district.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yes, that's it.
You have me in your district.
Yes.
Now, and now, that's the one thing is, oh, gosh, when, I mean, when, when the school board was doing it, they can't create precincts, so we were limited, you could only split a precinct between two school board districts, like couldn't split three ways. We could potentially take a precinct and split it into three precincts, in other words, make three precincts out of one and give each of the new precincts to somebody, which is kind of what we would have to do, I think, because the, 129A is already split at the bottom there, and it's part of 129A is going to, it's going to be a new precinct, and it's going to be in District Seven.
Well, it's already split again?
So if we were going to, if you'll look at, look at where, it's kind of the orange and the blue, like, look at precinct 129.
I got it, yeah.
A.
Runs down Punch to the Creek and North Range Road Extension.
Yeah, see, see right here? 129A is this sort of odd-looking little wedge.
Two people are good people.
And I'm just saying, take a look at the western, western part of that, there's, there's, because it's split on here, 129A is already split, on the old map that I showed you. And that, maybe that old piece to the west, maybe it could stay in Buddy's district.
I just go up the creek, Greg.
Yeah, you see this, here, this piece here.
Okay, so.
You probably have to leave that.
This is, let's, I think we need to go ahead and introduce these two ordinances, Mr. Buddy, Carlo, and Dan will get together, do a Zoom, and kind of work out these, what do you, what do you have any issues with?
Well, here.
John, what is your, you haven't said anything, what, what do you?
I just like get across from my house.
Is your mic on? Turn your mics on.
I would just like get, uh, part of 114.
That southern part of 114?
Yeah.
And then we would just have to see, is there anything, again, we'd have to kind of replace it, so it, you know, the, the difficulty is just going to be figuring out what we could put into District One from some part of District Two to replace it, so it's a swap.
Okay, you're talking about Miley Road and Bankston Road, Miles Lane?
Neil Road, south of Neil Road, maybe.
Okay.
We might could swap 116 and 114.
Well, the problem is, is he's in 116.
I live in 116.
He just lives in, he lives in. I do believe if I proposed that, he'd run me out of here.
All right, listen. On me and Buddy's situation.
Mike, turn your mic on.
We can, we can probably work this out down here, where Buddy can get Tickfall back.
Okay.
Okay? I just want to, I want to make sure when we do this, that there's some kind of a.
Oh, yeah, you want, you want a ni, nice bright line, you know?
Okay.
It's got to be a visible boundary.
Your mic's off now, Dan.
I'm sorry.
Is it?
Yeah.
Who, who are you pointing at?
I know, I know we've beaten the deadline here, this has got to be finished by the end of the year.
Yeah.
And I don't want to hold this thing up over just something this.
Oh, you're leaning away from the mic, he's not picking you up, that's what he, okay.
Yeah, we can introduce and then amend it, Carlo.
See, Carlo, you're just not being assertive enough.
No, I mean, look, I, I know we're under pressure to get this done, and like I said, I just want to make sure that everybody remembers, you want to do what you can and keep what you got, but you also got to remember, four years from now, there's going to be totally new people having to do this. And I don't think it's fair to somebody that's going to run, that you've got 16 different kind of people you've got to represent. But I, I want to get this done, and I know Buddy, Tickfall is important to him, I want to try to do what I can to do it, and I don't want to mess this map up to the point that we get back to where there's little in shoots here and little in shoots there. So whatever we got to do over here, Dan.
Yes, sir.
Let's look at it, and if Buddy doesn't care where that line goes, uh, we'll draw the line, because I know we got to get, we got to have actually two more public hearings, is that correct?
Those are scheduled for the 14th and the 28th.
Will this one count, since we're not going to approve anything tonight?
Yeah, and again, you just have to have a public hearing, and, you know, I don't know if anybody from the public wants to talk, but it's the availability of a public hearing, and I know Jill published them, she published three public hearings, tonight, 14th, and the 28th.
Now, we can introduce tonight and then amend.
And then amend.
Yeah, we can adopt one of the plans.
But what do we introduce? We introduce one?
We, one of these two.
A or B?
A, D, or both, is what y'all's options are.
Well, we can introduce A and still amend it?
Yes. Well, because just like any ordinance, where you introduce it, and then if during the debate, somebody goes, well, you know what? I'd like that fee to be $5 instead of $6.
But it has to be amended at introduction, correct?
Huh?
Dan, we need to check that, because it's under the charter.
Yeah, I think it has to be there.
I think it has to be amended at introduction.
Okay, that's true.
Now, what we can do, we have, if, if we introduce tonight, because we don't have